...of legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Plinsky?
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee?
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay?
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Here.
And Councilmember Freeman?
Here.
Okay, are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? Hearing none. Do we have any correspondence, Rose?
No.
Okay. We are at that first point in the agenda for any comments from the public, anyone that would like to address council this evening.
Excuse me.
Good evening, Don.
Good. Sorry. I almost didn't come because I did one of another stupid acts and took a head on and busted myself up, but I wanted to come anyway.
Well, hopefully you're okay.
Well, everything hurts, so I'm a little hard to get in. What I wanted to talk about this evening or make a public comment is last week you had a complete review of what was going to be accomplished on Project Highway 14. And I want to say before I get into it, I thought the explanation of how the report was done and studied was excellent. I didn't, you know, I probably didn't understand all the nuances, but I certainly understood what was done. The concern I have is, are we, is about are we wasting some money being spent? My first point is, is we hired a consultant, but really the consultant went to, I got Washtart or Olympia to find out what it is we had to do. So in my own mind, I'm trying to figure out what did he really add, and I could find very little. I guess the next thing is we hired a consultant and we gave him the the responsibility to do a job for us, but in essence, he also went to Olympia to find out what's supposed to be done. I guess from my point of view, I think if you hire a consultant, is their job is to find out what is needed to be done, and that is the responsibility of the mayor and the council to see how is it accomplished. So I'm concerned that we're wasting money where we have the answers and we some, we hire people to go out and tell us what maybe we should be doing ourselves. We have staff that can go to Washtart and say, what are the rules? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don. Good evening, Harvey.
Harvey Olson, 3903 R Street. On the way down here, I had a thought in my brain that I thought I would bring up. I have recently found out that the non-union personnel in the city and undoubtedly under Mr. Scott's leadership have agreed to pay 10% of their medical at the same rate that the police department has been paying for a while and that the fire department has just recently agreed to pay. Now also, I understand that the union employees' contract is up and they are negotiating with the union employees. And to make it unanimous, I would like and urge the city administrator and anybody else involved in the contract negotiations to make it uniform throughout the city, 10%, you pay for your health care. This would save the city, I don't know how much, but it's going to be more than $1.8350. So I thank you, Mr. Scott, for your leadership, and I hope it continues on, and I hope the rest of the employees agree to a 10% pay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Harvey. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address council this evening? Tom?
Tom Anderson, 740 East Street. The project appears to be done. My steps are up, my rating is up, and they are fantastic. It's really a big help for me, and I really want to thank the city and the contractors who did the job for doing an excellent job of providing this facility for me. Thank you.
You bet, Tom. Thank you. I'm glad all that got taken care of. Any other members of the public wishing to address council?
Okay, moving along to the consent agenda. This evening, we have a consent agenda that has six items on it. City council work, or city council minutes of January 3rd, 2012, our workshop minutes of January 9th, 2012, regular accounts payable claims in the amount of $221,656.85. Agenda Bill 1-12, an authorization for the mayor to sign the professional services agreement from OTAC Inc. for our stormwater permit compliance requirements. Agenda Bill 2-12, authorizing the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with the city of Camas in regard to the CTRN RTC council representation. And Agenda Bill 3-12, authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services agreement for public defense services with Jeffrey Barra, Vancouver Defenders LLC.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that the consent agenda be approved as read.
Mr. Mayor, I request that consent agenda item number six be pulled.
Okay. Number six is pulled.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we approve consent agenda items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Okay, hearing no objection, 1 through 5 are approved. Item number 6, Agenda Bill 3-12, a professional services agreement for public defense services. David?
Thank you, Mayor, council. The item before you is a request to authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement for an agreement that will provide required public defender services. As you recall, our current provider gave us notice pursuant to the terms of our contract with them a while back. City Attorney Don and I interviewed four interested parties for the position, and I am recommending that Vancouver Defenders LLC be engaged to provide our public defender services. The cost for the contract is identical to the cost that we've had with our previous provider over the last period of time. It's 32, a flat rate, $3,250 monthly, and then $350 per jury trial case if a case does go to jury. A little bit additional expense accrues to the public defender. The contract would be beginning in February of this year and would extend through the end of January 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the professional services agreement with public defendant, defense services.
Okay, we've got a motion. Is there any second?
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve, authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement. Counsel discussion?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very sure that Vancouver Defenders and Mr. Barra have excellent credentials. I mean no disrespect. However, I wonder if we might consider looking at the other attorneys or firms who are interested in working for our city, and here's why. The firm Vancouver Defenders is the very same firm that represented Mayor Gard recently in Cowalitz County. As a matter of fact, it is the same attorney within that firm. And so just a few weeks after Mayor Gard's court case ends, we are now offering a $3,250 per month plus $350 per case city contract to the same attorney. And looking at this from a citizen's perspective, I'd have to say that this has the appearance of favoritism, and I'm not able to support it.
Other counsel comments? John?
Mr. Mayor, how many people do we have for this RFP?
How many responded?
Yes.
I believe there were four?
We had four.
Okay.
Four individuals that responded. I would say after the interviews that there were two
Okay.
that rose to the top and that could provide the services, and then I made the call to to look at this firm over the other firm because of their size and the breadth of experience that they would bring. The other firm is, there'd be an individual that would provide this service, and then there's one other individual that would provide the backup. Vancouver Defenders would have a primary individual who would provide this service, but they have, I forget how many attorneys.
16 attorneys.
16 attorneys on the staff, and the key for me in this was some of the new rules that are coming down from the Supreme Court regarding the level of coverage that we have to provide with our public defender services. It's my understanding, and Don, correct me if I, if I get this wrong, that it's not unusual currently for an individual to be arraigned, their very, very first arraignment without the accompaniment of an attorney. It's a very quick proceeding. The new rules are going to require that the attorney be there. Vancouver Defenders has two attorneys in the courtroom all day, every day, tending to the wide variety of cases, so they'll readily available to provide that service for us. We were assured by the other firm that between the two of them that they could make that happen as well. So very close, I think both very capable, but the the depth of resources is what kind of turned me toward this particular firm as my recommendation. The other firm is capable, I believe, as well.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the record, Mayor Gard had nothing to do with this choice. It was all done by David and myself. I don't think he even knew they were involved. I think he probably would have preferred they weren't involved. But, so he had no input at all with regard to choosing this firm. David and I made that decision and then passed it on to Mayor Gard and passed it on to House members.
I would have to just say it's the timing of this issue.
I understand, I understand that.
And public perception. I mean, as elected officials, we're tasked with assuring the people of impartiality in all of our public decisions, and we need to assure them that their public officials' private financial dealings present no conflict of interest with regard to these contracts.
Right, and there was no, there was none here. I can tell you that without any hesitation.
Which is the same as I said last week, and unfortunately, council member, you are incorrect. Mr. Barra did not represent me at any time, so. But be that as may. Other counsel discussion? David?
Point of clarification, please. Of the three other firms that responded to the request for proposal, how many of them, do any of them have the depth that we require to meet the constitutional requirement?
Arguably, one, one other firm could qualify, although they don't have attorneys in the courtroom on a daily basis. They would have to be contacted by, they said they would make themselves available. I think they probably would make their best effort to do that. It's a two-person firm. Here you have a firm that does the public defender work for the city and for the county. And so they have attorneys in those courtrooms where we might have people coming in at all times. Where you run into the problem would be someone that has been arrested and haven't bailed out, and so they're, they come directly from the jail to the courtroom for their first appearance. And so these people have people on staff that are there all the time, and so wouldn't have to call somebody to come in from someplace else. They have people there that would be available to do that right away.
And would this cause a delay in the proceedings?
It could cause a delay in the proceedings if someone had to come in from someplace. And again, I think that the firm is very sincere. I think they would, they would make their best efforts to do it. What's coming down is the, is the Washington Supreme Court is imposing tighter restrictions on public defenders so that people that are appointed public defenders get good representation. Now, that's our goal, too.
So with these new rules in mind, what would be the impact of a, of a delay? For lack of counsel.
If they, if they required an attorney to be there, it could be a delay from possibly as much as a day to have the person brought back to be rearanged.
And then, Dave, does that require our police officers to bring people back and forth or to be there?
It probably, I can, that's a, Dave, I think this, it probably wouldn't because the, the people that are in jail are the ones that are the problem. If you're, if you're bailed out, it's fine because then you can, they can schedule a first appearance where the attorney can meet him there. It's only those cases where somebody's in custody that you run into this.
Okay, thank you.
And they're in custody at the county. We don't have a jail out here.
Excuse me, was there a cost difference in the other firms?
No, we did not solicit responses that included a bid, if you would, for the costs. We basically said, this is, this is what we've been paying for the last couple of years. It's a flat rate, and this is what we will pay.
So, excuse me, you feel that we're getting more service for the same amount of money by having a larger firm with more attorneys?
I think that's a slight difference, yes.
John?
I just want to get some clarification because I'm getting conflicting information. According to the Columbian, on October 6th, it says that Vancouver-based attorney Jeffrey Barra represents Gard according to the court records. And you said that he didn't represent you.
That is correct. If you would like to go back to court records of whoever was there at any point, Jeff sat in on one meeting early on in the entire thing and never once made an appearance in court. I could care less who you pick on this. Don is correct. I didn't, I had no knowledge whatsoever. I didn't even realize other than a, a casual mentioning probably two, three months ago that we were even going back out for any kind of a search for it, so when I was notified that, that Vancouver Defenders was even in the running, well, yes, it would, suffice it to say, I was a little surprised and went from there, so. But again. It's totally up to your decision. Dollar amount is the same no matter what. You're just talking about the number of attorneys that we'd have available to us for those that we take into court.
Another question. At the last meeting, we talked about the number of cases per year that we look at here in Waschigo. Can you give me that figure again?
It was about just under 300, 290?
I think it was about 258 to 300 last year. It varies. It's been going between 225 to 250, 275. It varies a little bit per year, but we've had the same amount and we wanted to keep it. Budget workers wanted to keep the same amount for these new people, and they're willing to do it for that, so.
And can I ask another quick question because I, I've been asking around to attorneys that I know, and I haven't received an answer yet, but does Vancouver pay a retainer also in addition to the per-case rate?
Do they pay like a jury fee?
Well, the, the, like, we pay the $3,250 per month plus the $350 per case fee.
Trial. I think that they do, and the reason we do that is so that, that someone can't argue later on that the public defender wasn't willing to follow through and go, go through a trial. And so it's kind of for our protection, and I think that probably costs us, I'm guessing, less than, less than $1,500 a year to do that. Very few of our cases go to trial, but 99% of them survive. So I can't tell you whether Vancouver.
I was just curious. I haven't got my answer yet, but I'm working on it.
We actually put it in there for our protection so that they, that somebody could, couldn't claim that, well, hey, the guy wouldn't go to trial because he was a lot of extra work and he wouldn't get any extra pay, so it's just a nominal amount. It's really not very much compared to what, you know, a private attorney would charge somebody for a trial day would usually be in a, probably 10 times that, $3,000.
I think there may be some confusion, council member. Our set fee is the set fee per month. Don, the 350 is only for those cases that go to trial to pay for the additional amount that goes.
Not just the judge trial.
So we don't pay 3250 a month plus 350 per case?
Yeah.
That's, yeah, 350.
Per jury trial.
Per case taken to jury trial, okay.
Correct, so there's no, nobody's getting paid twice.
That sounds, that sounds the same.
I think they, I think they might be. I'm not positive of that, but it's really kind of a fairness factor. If a person's going to take a jury trial, that takes a lot of effort to do that because you have to do all the prep and the witness, prepare jury instructions. And so, you know, a little incentive to do that is probably appropriate.
When I was checking references with respect to this service provider, I talked to the individual at the city of Vancouver who provides, or who manages this contract and has managed it over the last several years. They just signed with this firm for another five years. If I recall, their pricing and our pricing, they also do a flat rate. I don't recall on this specific point, but our rate is roughly plus or minus a couple of points. I can't remember exactly, but roughly about 10% of what the flat rate is for Vancouver. I can't remember how many cases they said they do in Vancouver or the county, but population-wise, that's about right. Just gives a, a feel. It's nothing, nothing scientific. Key for me on the pricing was that it's the price that we've been paying, and I think getting good service from the previous firm. We were, we were happy with their services. The one thing that is also true about this and all of the firms that we talked to made this point, but when the new rules come in and will require a little bit more of them, they will indeed require a little bit more than it will on February 1st. There isn't a, a change. They could always opt out, I suppose, but there was no.
There's no escalator.
There's no automatic escalator, whereas, for example, in Vancouver, it automatically opens once those rules go into effect. In fact, they explained to me that when they went out for this last fall, they had zero respondents to their RFP, which I found very interesting because that is a significant contract, I would imagine. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars in Vancouver because it's thousands of cases. I found it interesting that no one, no one responded. We had four that responded.
Couple of questions. Our current legal defense that we have, how many employees do they have?
Their firm has about six, I think, but they're not all specifically in criminal. They're, some of them do criminal and some of them do domestic relations. This firm, Vancouver Defenders, is all, all criminal.
Right.
Probably 90, 90% or so.
What I'm saying is the current firm prob, that we have now is probably using maybe two attorneys to represent our caseload?
I think that's probably, probably correct, yeah.
Okay.
I can't remember why they, do you remember why they opted out?
They had some staff changes. I think they actually, one of the staff members that was doing the Waschigo work had left the firm and they didn't want to replace, replace that person. They had, they do work for Battleground, too. I think they were getting a little thin on some of their, some of their work, so that's why they did it. They've been our provider for quite a while and we were very happy with them, but that was their decision.
Other questions from council? Okay, we've got a motion in a second to authorize the mayor to sign the professional services agreement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Russell?
No.
Councilmember Plinsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenlee?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindsay?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
No.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the final item that we have this evening under new business is reported, the Appointment Committee, Recommendations for Council Appointments. I believe everybody this evening had a sheet in front of them from the meeting late this afternoon for the recommendations coming forward. I believe the only hole that is on here is under Finance. And correct me if I'm wrong, it should be Councilman Greenlee that is in the, in the empty spot?
That's correct.
Paul?
I've been on most of these committees, in fact, all of them except Public Safety. And the workload varies quite a bit. One thing I wanted to mention is Public Works actually meets twice a month. But there's quite a learning curve here on some of these committees. Finance, you get, if you go to the newly elected officials workshop, you get really a few minutes on city finance. I would strongly recommend that every new council member who can see their way to do it would take the finance and budgeting training from the Association of Washington Cities. It's a two-day training. Normally, it's held once on the dry side, Tacoma, for example, and once in Leavenworth. Turns out that Leavenworth, despite its recreational character, the costs are for hotel rooms and transportation end up being in line with those essentially awash with Tacoma. But it's a, it's, there's actually three tracks in the finance training, 101, 201, and 301. And I've taken all three tracks, and I would strongly recommend that anybody who wants to have any understanding of city finance at all, take that. For public, for community development, the Department of Commerce does a number of trainings. For example, there is a training coming up the 29th of February that's called the Land Use Boot Camp Basic Training. It's 8:30 to 5:30, and it is in Sammamish, Washington. I'm not sure that you really need the all-day training, but if you're going to be on community development or want to understand the community development issues, especially the legal liabilities to the city, I strongly recommend that you take what's called the Planning Short Course, which is three hours, if I remember correctly, and I've taken it in Woodland and in Vancouver, actually. The Public Works, there are a bunch of trainings for that. I'm not sure that this would really be a required training, but there's a, there's a webinar coming up the 21st of February on Community and Economic Development Enlightenment Asset Versus Needs-Based Webinar. And these are, these webinars, typically what we do is we'll get together here in City Hall in chambers and put the webinar up on the big screen so we can all be here and, and see it and talk with each other. So there's, there's a level of, of commitment that comes with each of these positions if you really want to do the job. And so I, I mentioned that because I know I'm one of the few people that really don't have a whole lot of other responsibilities. I can devote my time to the city. I don't have children to care for or another job to worry about. And so I just, I would just encourage people to think through the time commitment that's involved. That's all.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the 2012 Committees and Liaison Positions.
Second?
I've got a motion in a second to approve the Committee and Liaison Positions. Counsel discussion?
I'd like to offer up an amendment if I could. Could we strike the SWEATA and the Chamber of Commerce off of this list since it doesn't need the council approval? It's a mayoral. It's a mayoral-appointed position.
Second.
Yes, SWEATA and Chamber of Commerce.
I don't hear any objection to that. Any other council questions?
I'm a little bit curious why I have so many. As a new member on the council, I think I see my name down there more than some of the other members. And this is a learning curve.
I don't know.
Who do I ask?
Well, I'd like to chime in on that. You're actually only on two committees. The other two that you're on are just liaison positions. So you're not a voting member of any kind for the liaison positions. So you're just there to be a support and information.
Having no experience, I don't know the time commitment or the, what these committees involve.
Yeah, and in all fairness, I would suggest that Molly put in quite a bit of time on both parks and cemetery. That's not one that you just show up for, even though, and those meetings typically are more than an hour.
That isn't a concern. It's the Public Works and Community Development because I think those are both responsible committees.
For Public Works, you've got myself and Councilmember Russell, who are the two senior-most council members on that committee. So I would think that we want someone new to bring along. Community Development, there's a lot to learn there, but frankly, the heavy lifting is done by planning commission.
Okay. I'm fine.
Yeah, and I'm sort of in that same, you know, I'm here to take recommendations on, I do have, if you're ever bored. I mean, if you have extra time.
Not since I got this job.
Feel free to stop by. I have a couple that would keep you busy. So, yeah, I'm here to take recommendations on, I mean, I definitely have a lot of interest in finance and community development, but I still feel like I'm in the sponge phase, soaking a lot of information in, so.
Just a point of order. We have an amendment on the table. It's got a first and a second. Can we vote on that and then move on to further?
Actually, you don't have a first and a second on an amendment. You offered up the amendment. I don't have a motion or a second for the amendment.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second on accepting the committees.
Right, I made a, I'm sorry, I made a motion to cut out the Chamber of Commerce liaison and the SWEATA liaison from this list because they are mayorally appointed and do not need council approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second to remove the SWEATA and the chamber positions. Any council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. In regard to positions on here, you can certainly take yourself out of any of these that you care to. There's nobody on council that can force you to sit on a committee you don't want to sit on. Just a point of information, though, I believe there are only four boards on here. In reality, three that have any voting positions whatsoever. They're all recommending bodies. I believe only RTC, CTRAN, and the Mosquito Control Board have any votes on anything outside of this council. In addition, the Lodging Tax Advisory Board does take votes at those meetings because of the entity it is. But then those typically, if those votes involve dollars, it needs to come back to the council for approval as well or be approved through the budgeting process. So all of these are pretty much informational recommending boards.
If I might add, Shoreline Review does vote, but the year that I was on it, we met once by email in the course of a year. All it does is decide, is basically ratify a staff recommendation as to whether or not a State Environmental Planning Act determination of significance or non-significance is ratified. That's all they ever do. And generally, there's no contention, so there's never been a Shoreline Committee meeting.
I guess what I was referring to, Mr. Mayor, is in most cities in the country, most council committees actually vote to make recommendations to the council at large. And we don't function like that. We haven't for some reason. I think that it would be proper and we should function like that as committees, as we hear things and things are going to be coming to council, to know that the council committee on this or that actually looked at it, researched it, and made a recommendation to the council at large. But, yeah, I mean, we don't have a formal write-up to do that.
Your question. I would hope that Councilmember Lindsay would stick with us on the Community Development Committee, simply because we need your perspective. And to answer your first question, why am I on all these boards? It's because we love you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I think the reason that we do not have formal committees and formal committee votes is that some years ago, a decision was made to go from a committee system to a workshop system. And as such, what the committees typically do is move, is worked by consensus. And where there is not a consensus, then they report that there's not a consensus. But the, I think there was concern, and I frankly would be concerned myself, on the part of a council of seven members, that decisions were being made by three. In fact, by two. And so that's why the Public Safety, Finance, Public Works, Community Development, Code and Policy Committees, basically what they do is they pre-workshop things. They don't take formal votes because that's done, that, all of that work is done inside the workshop by all seven council members.
Okay, any other questions, concerns? Everybody good with what's on the paper? Okay, hearing no objections, I've got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address council before we get to the last portions of the meeting?
Harvey Olson, 3903 R Street. And sitting back here, and I remembered one thing, and I don't know what I'm going to suggest is legal or not, but I think I'm going to propose this anyway. Since the mayor position in this town is a part-time position, paid $2,000 a month. If the mayor puts in 30 hours a week, he's not making a heck of a lot per hour. And I'm sure that the mayor, to be effective in this town, puts in more than 30 hours a week. I don't know, but I'm guessing that the mayor does, to be effective. So I'm going to suggest to, that the mayor's position in this city, because there will be savings from the non-union people paying health care, hopefully the union people will also pay 10% of their health care, that the mayor's position could be included in some way for medical benefits. Don't know if it's possible legally, ethically, or whatever, but I think that to attract, in the future, anybody that wants to be mayor of this town and be effective, you have to have qualified people. And to be qualified, I would think that a little benefit additional to the $2,000 a month for a part-time mayor, and I think the mayor puts in more than 30 hours a week. So I think that would be appropriate for the council to consider or whoever is in charge to consider. I rest my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Harvey. I'm not sure if I appreciate the support or not. It, I could tell you that it certainly, in my case, takes in more than 30 hours a month and by the, or, excuse me, a week, and by the time you get done with the amount that my wife and I give away to charity from that salary to get rid of all of it, I'm pretty sure I don't make anything at it.
But in the future, Mayor, I think it would be attractive to.
Yeah.
Let's all handle by the salary.
Yeah, Salary Commission takes that into account, and I believe they actually looked at it this time around as well, plus our medical coverage folks and AWC has a little bit of say in that whole thing as well. We actually looked at it for council on a whole, for all the electeds. Thankfully, though, I also have medical coverage, so I'm good there. Thank you, Harvey. Any other members of the public? Good evening, Mrs. Tyrrell.
Good evening. I'm Marilyn Tyrrell. I live at 950 G Street. The business of the law firm representing, oh, never mind, senior moment again. There is a public perception that that lawyer did represent the mayor. And I'm hoping that our representative here from our local newspaper would make a point of correcting misunderstandings that might occur. So I'm laying it on dawn. The other thing I wanted to say is the traffic light at Waschugle Road and E Street is just a delight, and whatever you spent on it is just wonderful. It's so nice to go up there and actually drive through.
Thank you, Marilyn. Any other members of the public wishing to address council? Okay, I have nothing for you this evening. Are there any items from council members? Paul?
There was some talk of a day of community service coming up on the 21st. Do we have any details on that?
Uh-uh.
Okay. I did actually struggle out of bed, bleary-eyed, to make it to the Columbian's Economic Forecast Breakfast at 7 o'clock in downtown Vancouver. It was interesting. There was a small intimate crowd of a little over 500. And the principal speaker is the president of the 12th District, that's San Francisco Federal Reserve Bank. And that district covers everything from Arizona to Montana, from Hawaii to Alaska. So it includes essentially all of the West beyond the Rockies. It's a huge district. His economic prognostication was about in line with kind of the mainstream, 2.5% to 3% growth in GDP over the next year. Inflation 1% or less, which would make it a better year than last year. On the other hand, he does not foresee significant decreases in unemployment. Probably not below 8% this year and probably not below 7.5% next year. The big, the giant in the room, of course, is the problem that we have yet to deal with. The trigger for this economic disaster was the housing market, which was way overpriced. And the real reason that it was overpriced is because the lenders made it be that way. Nobody has any, somewhere nationally, somewhere, on a state-by-state basis, somewhere between a fifth and a third of mortgage holders are underwater in the sense that they owe more on their home than the home is worth. Nobody has figured out a good way to fix that problem. There hasn't even really been any effective nibbling around the edges. I asked him in audience questions, rather directly, what might be done about that. And the best answer that he could come up with is that now that Fannie Mae and Freddie Mae, the government mortgage organizations, are in fact in receivership and under government control, that means that they can become policy arms of the government. And so that at least those loans which are Fannie Mae or Freddie Mac loans could be refinanced to at least market interest rates, which are now below 4%. And you might even see some relief on getting the loan-to-value ratio back in line, rather than having people be underwater. But the key thing is that right now, a conventional bank looks at your loan and says, yeah, you're paying 7.5% and yeah, we'd like to lend you the money at less than 4%, but gee, the house is worth less than you owe on it, so we can't. Scott Bailey, who's the State of Washington Department of Employment Security, Southwest Washington economist, who has lived here and done forecasts and reports in this area for years and years. I also talked to him briefly, and he frankly was not even as optimistic as the Fed President. There were then three breakout sessions. You could, there was time to attend two of them. One of them was basically Realtors talking about the real estate market. I didn't go to that one. Another one was about infrastructure. And the other one was on basically workforce development. The one on infrastructure was particularly interesting because Don Wagner, who's the local head of Washington State Department of Transportation in Southwest Washington and has been for many years, talked a little bit about what's going on. Again, I threw him a question and he laughed and said, oh, thanks for such softball. The problem is, how in the world are you going to finance building roads or transportation systems? Over the past little more than a decade, State of Washington passed increases in gasoline tax amounting to 14.5 cents per gallon. And at the legislature's direction, what they use that money for is to finance bonds so they could do the projects, build the projects upfront. That money is all completely committed. This project out on SR14 is part of it. There is no new money available from that. And even with reasonable likelihoods of contract extensions, all of the projects will be complete sometime in '15. There is no money, zero nada, nothing, for new transportation projects of any significance at all. The problem is, one of the problems is that if you look at the tran lines, the number of miles driven has increased every year in Washington, even in the economic. of miles driven has increased every year in Washington, even in the down, in the economically down years. And roughly speaking, road maintenance and cost, and how many roads you need, is in fact directly related to miles driven. On the other hand, gas tax revenues have been declining. The 1995 six-cylinder pickup that I have in front of my house gets 14 miles to the gallon on the highway, less than that in town. A 2004 Ford pickup, six-cylinder, gets 25. So, the, the gas tax revenues foreseeably are in decline and are not likely to go up. We have, on the order of $50 billion worth of projects that need to be built in the State of Washington, and if you raised the gas tax a dollar a gallon, it wouldn't come close to paying for it, and nobody believes that you can do that. I asked him specifically about going to what's called ton-mile for all vehicles. In other words, you charge a personal automobile based on how much it's weigh, how much it weighs, and how many miles it drives over a year. He said that the trend is away from that. It used to be that there were, there were states that charged ton-mile on trucking. But when you talk about a delivery truck, that's a problem. You put 20,000 pounds on the delivery truck, 10 tons, and then you deliver one ton at each of 10 locations, the computational problem, the bookkeeping problem, is huge, both for the company and for the, and for the state. So, the trend is away from that. But clearly, user fees of some sort are the trend of the future. And, another little factoid he threw out, he said, "For example, we're talking about the Columbia River Crossing, if I can put 2,000 people a day on public transit, that's one lane I don't have to build." That's a stunning number. Most of the rest of the country uses tolling much more comfortably than we do. But it was his opinion that ultimately, there's no way around tolling, and, and not just bridge tolling, but tolling on, on the general use of I-5, and that probably, it would be time variable. That 2,000 additional cars at 7:30 in the morning crossing the Columbia River, you have to build another lane. You could easily add 2,000 cars a day crossing at 2:00 AM, and nobody would even notice. So, it's likely, on cost basis, that, um, over the next, and this isn't going to happen in next year, or probably not in the next five, but certainly over the next decade, we're going to see tolling that's based much more on time of day, and miles driven, and in fact, on location. And it will be variable for all of those things. The technology certainly exists, uh, they, in New York State, they've been using what they call FastPass for more than a decade. It's a little radio device, it sits, hangs underneath your rearview mirror, and instead of stopping at the toll booth, you cruise through at 20 miles an hour. And actually, I think that goes back 20 years. There's much better technology available today. So, that, that was kind of a stunning insight into where we're going on funding of transportation. Just as a quick aside, there are a number of cities who's also have been talking about street utilities, which would be a utility charged for the, for the use of streets in the same way that we charge for water and sewer and, and garbage. Obviously, there is a lot more political pushback on that than on some other issues. But, uh, and, and it frankly hasn't gone, gone anywhere in the legislature. They had a chance, they've had a chance the past two years to look at it, and it, it never really was taken seriously. So, but I thought that was probably the biggest takeaway for me, is that the future of transportation funding, uh, we, we really are going to have to completely change the model, that gas tax isn't going to do it.
That's all, thanks. John?
A couple of things. One, I know that there is an environmentalist group that is lobbying very hard, each of us, on a train issue. And, uh, I would, would like, if the mayor is possible, to have this on a future, next workshop, or the workshop after that, to discuss this, so there's not playing everyone against each other. Would really be great.
On the coal trains?
On the coal trains. The other, uh, thing that I have as well, is, uh, I don't know, come back to me, I'll remember it in a second.
Can I, Joe?
I was going to ask the chief of police, and he's not here tonight, about, um, a traffic question, but maybe you already know the answer to it, now that we have, on E Street, we have one lane going in both directions, then we have the median lane for, uh, for turning. I'm curious, when the C-Trans bus comes through, pulls over to a, a bus stop with his flashers on, are we allowed to, and he's taken up 2/3 of the lane, there's 1/3 of the lane left, possibly, approximately, so you, there's room to go into that left turn median and pass him. Now, I was under the impression that that was perfectly legal, but I'm just wondering if anybody has a specific answer.
Could you have to turn that one over to Dawn? I know we've been told that, whether it's a bus, whether it's the mail, folks delivering the mail, or anybody else, it's permissible to go into that, that turning lane to pass, but whether it's actually legal or not-
That's my belief, I don't-
That was my belief. Now, my next question is, how do we train the public? Because I travel that round trip twice a day, minimum, and the public needs some education.
I, I would, I would just add that, that it is certainly true, however, that if it's a school bus with the flashers on-
Oh, no, I didn't, no, it's not a school bus.
Then you absolutely do not have the right to pass it.
No, just the C-Trans and the mail.
In either direction. But C-Trans, it was, we were told during the workshops, that, that, that is permissible, but-
Yeah, I wasn't here for those.
I'm, I'm, I'm not here to render legal opinions.
No, as a school bus driver, I better know that one. These big red lights flashing at you, giving you an idea. So, how do we help the public? Is that something we can put in the post-record, something we can put on our-
Same website.
Website, and C-Trans, I certainly will encourage C-Trans to, uh, see if they can help us, and some education too, because it, it does become a traffic issue. I experience it.
We can certainly incorporate it into the website, we can certainly put some information together for the newspapers, whether they run it or not, we don't have-
Sure.
-control over that. I think we would be hesitant to put onto the street anything that talks about passing lanes, for folks to, to start believing that that's a passing lane in the middle. But, yeah, short of that, we could probably attempt to do some education.
Just for safety's sake, um, just from personal experience, I've, I've run across it a few times. Almost said run into it, but I didn't.
Other items? Dave?
I'd like to take issue with Mr. Greenley on, on one thing. Actually, on two things. First of all, housing lenders are not at fault for the housing bust. Government regulations requiring housing lenders to lend to people who were not qualified, that's where the responsibility lies. When the market went down after these loans were made to people that weren't qualified for them, a lot of these people threw in the towel, walked away from their homes, and defaulted on their loans. So, if you're looking for the root for the housing bust, I would recommend that you look at three things. One is the 1977 Jimmy Carter Community Reinvestment Act, that started saying that, uh, the criteria that lenders were using to determine whether or not people were creditworthy for these loans, had to be changed. And they changed not to a financial goal, but a political goal, of getting everybody possible into housing. And it's a laudable political goal, but it wasn't economically feasible, and by 2005, we were aware of that. Second thing I'd recommend you look at, is the history of Janet Reno from about 1995 to about 1998, where she was threatening business, uh, lenders with sending them to jail, if they didn't comply with the government requirements to make loans to these people. And the third thing I'd urge people to, to learn about, is the corruption within Fannie Mae, and a little bit in Freddie Mac, but Fannie Mae was the major player in that one. There, there are reasons for the housing bust, and those are three big ones right there. The idea that lender greed was behind it doesn't pan out, that's a political ploy. Secondly, I noticed that there's a, an effort to put people on public transit. It's been going on since, uh, around 1981, that I know of, when they, they changed the Transportation Act to, uh, make it possible to use gas taxes and other revenues that were traditionally reserved for roads, use them for public transit, specifically light rail. And all these projects started to spring up. Uh, I think it's going to be difficult to get people to, uh, give up their cars and, and take public transit in this country, because nearly all the opinion surveys of commuters out there conclude that people prefer their automobiles, and there are good reasons for that. And my own opinion here is that the role of government is to facilitate that desire. They want to use their cars, do what you can to facilitate it. It, not the role of government to force people onto public transit. Government was intended by the founders of this country, it was created as servant, not master. And it's become master more than servant. And I think that needs to be addressed, that's why I ran for, for city council, and I think that, uh, we have a lot of work to do in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Joyce?
I just, briefly, I want to say, I spent this week visiting with Chief Schumacher of our fire department, Chief Kohler of the East County Fire and Rescue. I went to the volunteer firefighters' meeting, and I also met with Kevin Bergstrom and Michael Coyle of the professional firefighters. We're in good hands, and it was a very informative and time well-spent on my part, and they were very gracious with their time with me.
Good. Paul?
Needless to say, needless to say, I disagree somewhat with Councilmember Schumacher. I was actually, I was actually a mortgage broker, until 1995. The largest mortgage failure was countrywide, a private, private company, which is not regulated by the Community Reinvestment Act, because the CRA applies only to banks. There's a whole lot more detail. The actual mechanism of the clap, of the collapse, has much more to do with some very arcane and difficult to understand things called credit default swaps, and other kinds of very complicated derivatives. That problem, in short, was that a company like Lehman Brothers could create for itself hundreds of billions of dollars of liability, with no reserve requirement, with no capital to back it up. So, the smallest straw on the camel's back, and the whole bloody thing collapses. And that's really what happened. Now, much of those credit default swaps were involved in mortgages, but certainly not all of them. And, uh, for instance, there's some, one of the things that those in the know worry about, about Europe, is that there's some sovereign debt involved in credit default swaps. And, um, Goldman Sachs's fingerprints are all over this one, too. But, um, the, the other thing is that the, the CRA really applied mostly to inner cities and its environs. The real collapse in places like Las Vegas happened when you had ordinary, middle-class homeowners who were buying five and six properties in Las Vegas, that they couldn't afford to make the payments on, and it's, it's what in the trade is called the larger fool theory. The idea is that you'll pay a price for the property, and then you'll assume that in, within six months, you can find a larger fool who will pay a larger price. And, especially in Florida and in Nevada, especially Las Vegas, but also in the whole Los Angeles area, Los Angeles, Orange County, Palm Springs, that whole area, you had similar problems, where people were buying not houses to live in, which is pretty much what CRA applies to, but investment properties that they were very quickly in, over their head on.
Councilmembers, if, if I could ask, if we can try and bring council comments back to-
Sure.
...before this body, I, I don't want to go through a lot of philosophical things back and forth on things we can't control. So, with that, my apologies, Councilman Greenley.
I'm done, guys.
John, did you remember your other item?
No, I'm good.
Other items from council? I would certainly entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I could, I could argue that one all day long. I was prepared to do so.
I'm sorry? You decide.
It's in the budget this year.
It's in the budget this year.